I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a statement about another question?
According to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as follows: On January 12th and July 12th, 2017, notice was sent to the Home News Tribune, Star Ledger, Local Source, and The Kirk of the Municipality. I state that there is no smoking in this building at any time. In addition to the listed items in this agenda, the Board of Education may discuss and act upon other items not specifically referred to herein, as is allowed at the regularly scheduled monthly board meeting under the Sunshine Law.
Oh, okay. Well, hopefully.
Mr. Tapaleski?
Here.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Mr. Worrath?
Here.
Mr. Alvarez?
Here.
Mrs. Beviano?
Present.
Mrs. Birch?
Here.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Here.
This time we'll get the approval in a minute.
Snowproof.
Second.
Mr. Tapaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Worrath?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviano?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Mrs. Slater?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes. All right, this time we'll open the dais to anybody from the public who wishes to come up and make some comments about agenda items only. Please feel free to come. Okay, seeing then, we'll move on to our reports. First reported, you are Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. President. My report will be brief tonight. Begin by giving our monthly HIV report. This month, we had three incidents recorded. One of those was validated as being an HIV incident, one was not, and one was deemed undeterred. The actions taken included counseling and a class change, and the victim was counseled. In district news, yesterday, I'm extremely proud, I'm extremely proud to formally announce, and you'll be hearing a lot more about this, but two of our elementary schools, School Number Six and School Number Eight, have been given prestigious recognition as Apple Distinguished Schools for their innovation in teaching. Apple distinguished schools are centers of innovation, leadership and educational excellence that use Apple products to inspire creativity, collaboration, and critical thinking. Our Technology One-to-One Initiative is one of the reasons why we were selected for this award, which it's an arduous application process. It took countless hours by a team of teachers and administrators to put together, and we're really, really proud that School Six and School Eight have been designated as Apple Distinguished Schools. Like I said, we'll be hearing a lot more about that in the future. So congratulations to School Six and School Eight. This month is Fire Prevention Month, and I just want to give a public thank you to the Linden Fire Department for not just what you did this month at our school, but what you do for us all the time. This month, the fire department has been stopping by all of our elementary schools. We've posted a lot of pictures on our social media sites. They allowed our youngest children to see and hear smoke detectors. They allowed firefighters, the firefighters allowed them to put on their gear, and the firefighters wore full gear so that the children could see them, and God forbid, in case there was a fire, the children wouldn't be afraid of it. Children got to use a fire hose, always their favorite thing, and they were also invited to what was a very successful night last Friday, Fire Prevention Night. But remind our parents and the board that next week, we have elementary conferences scheduled for Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. We do have night conferences now at the elementary level for Wednesday night for those parents who are unable to make a day conference. And finally, I want to remind parents to support your school and march with your school in the 65th Annual Halloween Parade, which will be taking place on Sunday, October 30th, at 2:00 p.m. Mr. Collins, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you.
It does not conclude my report. I apologize. We have, for those of you in the audience, we have something that we've just been doing the last few months, putting out Good News Linden. And it's on the, on the stage, there's copies for you to read about all the great things that are going on. This is stuff that's been on our social media, stuff that's been on our website, all the amazing things going on in our district. And tonight, we have a special guest who's just gonna take a minute. We have a Linden High School senior here by the name of Maisha Burnham, who is an international baccalaureate student, who is selling socks throughout the month of October to celebrate Socktober. She's doing this, she's gonna tell you the reason why she's doing it, but this is a part of her IB curriculum. Part of the IB curriculum is the CASC, Creativity, Action, and Service. They're required to do certain projects. So this is, this is Maisha's idea. We're gonna ask her to tell you all about it. Now, Maisha, you're gonna be on TV too.
Oh, really?
Oh, yes. Why don't you turn that whole podium around and face the audience?
Sorry. So yeah, I'm Maisha Burnham. I'm an IB senior. So for my IB project, I'm going, I'm trying to, I'm partnering with this organization called We Help Too, and our aim is to provide prosthetic limbs for an amputee. So we're selling socks. There's three pairs in the pack of socks, and $12 each, and our goal, and all proceeds are gonna go to the prosthetic limb. So I'm here to ask for your support and your help in this project, and our goal is to be, is to sell 120 packs to revive above the leg me prosthetic, and well, the leg prosthetic as well. So if you guys can help at all, that would be really amazing, and thank you for your support. Yeah, thank you.
Maisha took it on her own initiative to come to the meeting tonight, which says a lot about her, I think. So Maisha, we wish you continued success with this. I think it's a great activity that you're, that you're doing for a good cause. Again, if you didn't hear, Maisha's goal is to sell 120 packs of the socks. Do you have any samples?
I have two.
Well, you better get them, because we wanna see samples, Maisha.
Maisha, I was going to actually email you later. Could you put me down for one order of socks? I would like some more, so.
Maisha, why don't you get the socks and I'll, oh, thank you, Mr. Walters. And Maisha, could you tell, tell everyone how they can contact you? If you sell 120 socks, that will pay for two prosthetic legs. Okay. We'll turn that mic on.
Oh, so turn around again, or is it?
See, we're on the walk, can we cancel?
Okay, so here are the socks here. So we have, this is a figure pack, and there's five pairs in this pack, and the options are men's socks. We have girls, we have men's, women's, and also them all. So if you guys would like to help, that'd be really awesome. So yeah.
Show the audience to Maisha.
Oh, yeah.
And tell them how they can get in contact with you.
These are socks here. We have a printout as well, and you guys can email me. Did I say my email? Yeah.
It's, it's, you're comfortable with that?
Okay, so it's 53698@lindenstudents.lindenps.org. Also, my number, or even this policy to the teacher, high teachers at the high school. You can go to her as well, and that can also help. So, yeah, thank you so much, guys.
Thank you, Maisha. Have a good night and good luck. It's a good cause.
Have a nice night.
Mr. President, that concludes my report. All right, Maisha, we have a lot of people who want socks, so give us the email address one more time. Okay, come up here and shout it out.
Oh, yeah, the link is on the Linden High School, the link is on the Linden High School website. So if you go there, picture of me on the screen, you can click it. We have all the information there if you have any questions. So yeah, thank you so much.
Can I repeat the email?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Beviano.
The email address is 62344@students.lindenps.org, or you can send a text to area code 9084267143. Again, each pair is $12, and the name of the project is Socktober, and it's being donated to Leg Works.
Thank you. May I have a mic? Now we'll move on to curriculum instruction. Mrs. Beviano?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Curriculum and Instruction Committee, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent, present the following thirty-six motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Items 1 through 5: Deal with the approval of specialized programs for the placement of classified students; Determination of out-of-district placements; The approval of payments for related services; The assignment of paraprofessionals; And the approval of services for bilingual evaluators. Item 6 and 7: Approve the home instruction services for students enrolled in specialized placement programs. 8: Approve team sports schedules for the winter 2017-18 season. 9: Amend board action on past CNI reports. 10: Authorize this curriculum writing. 11: Approve curriculum. 12: Grant permission for use of facilities and school activities. 13: Approve district field trips and amendments to field trips. 14: Approve training for district staff. 15: Approve professional development activities. 16: Approve affirmative action team members. Item 17: Approve the annual tuition and number of students attending programs at the Union County Vocational Technical School. 18: Authorizes the administration of the IB diploma examinations. 19, 20, 21, and 22: Approve Title I after-school and lunchtime tutoring programs. 23: Approve courses through ediscere for 12th grade students. 24: Grant permission for various Linden High School groups to participate in city wall tree lighting ceremony. 25: Grant permission for a staff member to conduct her internship at School Eight. 26: Approve the contract with Robert Wood Johnson, Mornin' Dis Health, to establish a cardiac screening assessment program for Linden Public School students. 27, 28: Grant approval for therapy dogs to participate in programs at School Six and McManus Middle School during the 2017-18 school year. 29: Grant approval to participate in the SEAL of by-Liberacy program. Item 30: Grant permission to administer the oral language assessments for the SEAL of by-Liberacy purpose examinations. 31: Accept the Superintendent's report on all acts of violence and vandalism for Report Period Two during the 2016-17 school year. 32: Approve the submission of New Jersey Q-SAC Statement of Assurance, Assurance, 2017-18 to the New Jersey DOA. 33: Approve the submission of the fiscal year 2017 NCLB final expenditure report. 34: Grant to submit the ESEA Title I comparability report. 35: Approve the resolution to recognize and celebrate American Education Week in the Linden Public Schools from November 13th through the 17th. And Item 36: Approve the resolution to recognize the Linden Public Schools partnership with Fuzu High School Number Three and the celebration of their 75th anniversary. Mr. President, I move Curriculum and Instructions 1 through 36, and respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Mr. Tapaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Worrath?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviano?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Mrs. Slater?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes, I have all but fourteen words. Chris Collins. All right, this time we'll hear somebody to make a motion. Now we go to executive session.
So.
Second.
Okay. Paul?
Mr. Tapaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Worrath?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviano?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Mrs. Slater?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yeah, this is for personnel, and Dr. Robotosi told me it's not gonna be long at all. So we should be back in a few minutes, hopefully. Thank you.
We go back in the public. Will we go back to public?
Second.
Okay, Paul?
Mr. Tapaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Worrath?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviano?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Mrs. Slater?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
All right, Management Operations, Mr. Tapaleski?
Thank you, Mr. President. Management Operations Committee, upon recommendation, the Superintendent of Schools presents the following twenty-two items to the Board of Education for approval. Items 1 and 2, refer to Dr. Robotosi.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Tapaleski, I have to just know which numbers 1 or 1.2 are on. We were very, very sad to hear the death of one of our teachers who was actively working for us, Ms. Dana Lowery. She's worked for the Board of Education for the last nine years as a special education teacher. Started her career at Linden High School, spent a few years at Soul Middle School, most recently was at McManus Middle School. My central jersey wrote a really beautiful tribute to Dana in an article. I just wanna share this comment that her, that her sister said, that she loved her students. She loved them, and they gave her a love that no one else could, said Higgins, adding that her sister was proud of the students who left her, but still kept in touch. She was a very well liked. A parent commented on Facebook that heaven gained an angel, and added that Ms. Lowery was a blessing for her own child. On behalf of the entire Linden School District, I want to offer Dana's family our most heartfelt sympathies, and let them know that our thoughts are with them during this time. On another note, which is sad for me too, my very good friend, Ms. Mary Andoni, has decided to call it quits, and I can't believe it. So Ms. Doni, who I have known since I was just a young lad, has worked for the Linden Board of Education for 20 years, but really has been involved in our schools for much longer than that, as a parent of six children who attended our schools. Ms. Doni has been working at School Two as a part-time aide since September of 1997. She's been a fixture at our Board of Education meetings, and I don't normally speak for the board, but I will tonight when I say, "We're always happy to see you," not so happy to see your husband. So, Mary Ann, you know, the kids are gonna miss you, the faculty and staff are gonna miss you. I will personally miss you, not only because you bring me treats, because you always do, don't tell anybody. Maybe now you'll have a little more time, I can get more treats. But I want to thank you for your many, many years of service, and hope that your new beginning is filled with happy memories of the years you spent making contributions to our kids' lives and your own kids' lives. You've been a, you are a Linden legend, and we will miss you. And there might be some other board members who might want to make a comment later. Thank you, Mr. Tapaleski.
Item 3 is to amend board actions on past management operation reports. Item 4 is to accept the following resignations. Item 5 is to appoint the following staff for the 17-18 school year. Item 6 is to approve the following leave of absence. Item 7 is to compensate the following staff for unused vacation and sick days upon retirement as pre-negotiated contract. Item 8 is to retroactively appoint the following staff as presenters for the district professional development session on October 9th. Item 9 is to appoint the following staff for office assistants during the 17-18 school year for fall and spring evening parent teacher conferences. Item 10 is to appoint the following staff for curriculum writing at the contractual rate. Item 11 is to appoint the following staff for ESL Parent and Community Leadership Committee for the 17-18 school year. Item 12 is to appoint the following staff to work Family Science Night at School Four for the 17-18 school year. Item 13 is to grant approval to create a step club at Linden High School for the 17-18 school year. Item 14 is a motion to withhold employees' pay for August 30th, 2017, and restore one sick day to the employee. Item 15 is to appoint the following coaches for winter sports and summer-spring sports. Item 16 is to appoint the following as assistants coaches on a voluntary basis for the winter of 17-18 season. Item 17 is to appoint the following staff to work athletics security. Item 18 is to appoint the following substitute secretaries for the 17-18 school year at the contractual rate. Item 19 is to appoint the following staff as substitutes for the after-care program at all after-care sites. Item 20 is to appoint the following aide as substitute teacher for the 17-18 school year. Item 21 is to appoint the following substitutes for the 17-18 school year at the rates listed, and item 22 is to put employee 3-17/18 on paid administrative leave. Mr. President, I move Management Operations, Items 1 through 22, and respectfully, see.
Second.
Mr. Tapaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Worrath?
Yes, to all, except I abstain from number four, Gina Colmanutsa, and number five, Maya Jimenez.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviano?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Mrs. Slater?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on, we'll go to Mr. Alvarez for Support Operations.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Transportation Committee, upon recommendation of Superintendent of Schools, and the Vice Administrator for Secretary, presents the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. In Finance, items 1 through 8 are the monthly board business for approval. Item 9, amendments to past board action. Items 10 to 13 and 24 are acceptance of funds as follows: $5,000 from Philip 66 for the Linden High School Tenancy Program; $200 from Philip 66 for an ad in the Superintendent's Journal; $20 and a set of symbols from Mr. David Franklin; $136 from Hannah Parra; $17,000 from Philip 66 for an LED messaging display at School Number 10; Item 14 is to accept the donation of eight handheld radios in the Linden Police Department. Item 15 is to approve a contract in law with the Rollway YMCA for 2017-18 SIM lessons as listed. Item 16 approves a contract with the district architect of record, the Tarabino, for professional services with the new electrical upgrades with Schools 9 and 10 as listed. Item 17 is to approve a contract with Energy for America for professional engineering services where quality permits as listed. Item 18 is to approve the removal of the school's current curriculum from Zero Spilling as listed. Item 19 approves a tuition contract for students to attend Linden Public Schools for 2018-19 school year. Item 20 is a resolution terminating a contract with Pathbit Company due to a lack of actual response on specified electrical time and material bid. Item 21 is a resolution to approve the submission of the annual comprehensive maintenance plan and the annual maintenance budget in accordance with NJC 6826A-3.2. Item 22 is a resolution to approve provision of requests to various state entities to allow districts to choose between a cost-reversing basis rather than a fixed-price basis when awarding full-service management contracts in the future. Item 23 is to declare the items listed as surplus into the disposal of same. Item 25, resolution seeking approval for youth consultation services, and not to charge students for reduced or pay meals in compliance with the New Jersey Department of Agriculture Child Nutrition Program regulations. In Facilities, items 1 through 11 are to make action previously taken. Items 2 to 10 are to include the used facilities, and no charge for following: Elena Orey, Principal in the High School PT meeting; Peter Findele, Principal at McManus Middle School for activities as listed; Anthony Haddam, Principal, School Number Four, the program as listed; Joseph Dooley, Chief, Linden Department; Fire Guard recruit, training as listed; Edward Kushner, Sports Supervisor, Chief of Linden Department of Public Property and Community Services for events as listed; James Anderson, Corporate Director, Morning Star Community Development Corporation, for Team Night, as Group Four as listed; Robert Pendleton, Director and Helper for one or another, location, date, and time as listed; Maria DeGons, Girl Scout Trooper Leader for Brownie Meetings, as Group Two, date and time as listed. Mr. President, I move Finance, items 1 to 25, and respectfully, items 1 through 11, and respectfully, ask for a second.
Second. Paul, please.
Mr. Tapaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Worrath?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviano?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Mrs. Slater?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
All right, Planning and Policy, Mr. Worrath?
The Planning and Policy Committee submits policies for first and second readings to incorporate new features required by code and law and to elaborate on local district policies. For first reading, 3541.33, Transportation Safety. Policy revised so that the driver and transportation aide must complete training before services are provided to the student. 6114, Emergencies and Disaster Preparedness. Policy revised to mandate all full-time employees to receive training on school safety and security drill. 6145.1/6145.2, Intramural Competition and Interscholastic Competition. Policy revised to allow students attending charter schools to participate in high school sports not offered by their school. Policy also revised to allow varsity letters for any school-sponsored interscholastic extracurricular activity. 5141.21, Administering Medication. New section added on emergency administration of opioid antidote and liability for the administration of naloxone. For second reading, 3510, Operation and Maintenance Plan. This policy has minor edits and a new section on safe drinking water. 3516, Safety. This policy was revised to add a section on safe drinking water. 5141.4, Missing Abuse and Neglected Children. Revised to provide more details on due process when allegations are found to be true. Mr. President, I move these motions for first reading and second reading, and respectfully, ask for a second.
Second.
Mr. Tapaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Worrath?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviano?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Mrs. Slater?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
And now we'll move on to our reports. Special Committees, Delegates, our State Delegates, Tapaleski?
Thank you, Mr. President. On October 6th, I was the second meeting for the strategic plan for the New Jersey School Boards Association. We met. The meeting was to establish a goal and objectives for the next three years. There are four goals. I sat on the committee for the future, what was referred to as Future Reading Association. What they found in the first meeting was that a lot of references were made back to computers and computer readiness and future readiness, and so instead of just having three goals, they decided they needed four. And that was the one I was coming I sat on. We completed our work and have forwarded that information to school boards, which will now come up with an action plan for those goals, and that will be released sometime soon. On November, in November, I think it's the first, I am serving on the task force for non-college-bound students. The task force is expected to issue its report and recommendations by June 2018. And finally, school board's workshop starts on Monday in the afternoon. It's, there's a lot of great things. Monday, if you get down anytime during the early part of the day, you can go in and register so that when you go in on Tuesday, you beat the rush, you'll have your badges. All of you should have gotten the emails. You either print out the email or have it available on your phone, and that will print out your badges. Also, if you're there on Monday, I will be at the county chat room from 2:00 to 4:30, since I serve as county president, and it will give you a chance to interact with other school board members from the county and, of course, the state. Each county will have a solutions table and represented by county officers, and NJSDA staff. And the next delegate assembly is November 18th. That concludes my report.
Thank you. County Delegate, Mr. Tapaleski?
Yes, on November 9th is the next county meeting. The New Jersey School Boards is rolling out a new governance training series, and basically, it's designed to supplant some of the training that is done for, that we have to do by law. And so this is the one that we will have in November is, I'm trying to see. Well, it's one of those, it meets one of those goals. So it is being held at Harrison High School from 6:00 to 9:00. The meeting usually starts, they start setting it at 6:00, and the meeting usually starts at quarter to 7:00. You register for the program on your own, but you will not be registering for specific governance. That will be done after, once you show up, and they know what type of government, what you're, you have to fulfill. So for example, someone who was elected last year for the first time, that's who did governance too. Someone who's who is elected, has to Uh, someone who's, who's, uh, has to do governance four. Uh, so they'll determine how much you get there. Uh, that concludes my county report.
Okay, uh, negotiations committee, Mr. Topaleski?
Uh, we have been notified by, uh, the education association that they are ready to start. So we'll be having some discussions.
Okay, thank you. All right, at this time we'll have the EST for parents, Mr. Birch?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Sure.
Okay, so we had our meeting on Tuesday, October eleventh at the administration building at six thirty PM. We had parents from school two, school five, school six, school nine, school ten, Soul McMadison High School. Uh, we had our guest speaker, which was Dr. Robert Tozzi, and he reported on a couple of things that, well, a lot, but to sum it up, he talked about the diversity in our district. He talked about the different languages spoken in our district. He talked about socioeconomic status. He talked about buildings and facilities. He talked about budget information. And, um, he also answered any of the questions that any of the parents had that were, um, at, attending our meeting that night. And he did a wonderful job. And he was there for most of the meeting, so we thank him very much because the second half of our meeting was for the parents.
Talk about it. At one point I actually got out the door and he pulled me back in.
That is true. Um, he also showed, um, a video from the launch of, um, one of the songs that they did remake of from the play that the parents asked for at our last meeting. And, um, that was awesome. The parents really enjoyed that. Um, he talked about what was great in our schools and, uh, all the other things that were going on. So it was wonderful to have him there and we hope to see him at many more of our meetings.
Mr. Birch?
Okay, we have a floor. Can we go on to, can we say about that? More of the board meeting?
Yeah, we just, um, had some concerns with the parents.
All right, let me just backtrack one minute. I, I would make sure the educational service committee was top in charge of, had nothing to do with it.
Um.
Sorry for the interruption.
That's okay. Uh, oh, I believe his next, Dr. Robert Tozzi's next chat with the parents is going to be December eighteenth.
That's correct.
Okay. Uh, some of the concerns that the parents had at the meeting, um, they were concerned about the summer reading projects and the math projects and the inconsistency of grading them. And, um, they, Dr. Robert Tozzi did have that discussion. I mean, I'll need to get back to the parents on, on that topic. There was some, um, concern about the different communications that are going on between, um, the students and the school district. They're saying that there's just many going on, remind Canvas, Genesis, and they don't kind of talk to each other, um, the communications. But I do know that Dr. Robert Tozzi did say that pretty soon Canvas and Genesis are going to be compatible, so that's going to help. Um, there was some concern about back-to-school night at McMadison. They said that in the sixth grade, it was a little congested and not so much, um, organized. And there was a lot of, um, uh, there's a lot of students there, so it was kind of hard for the parents to, um, uh, understand what was going on that night as well as, um, at school six. Um, there was a parent that gave a shout out to Mr. Ventura, who was overly prepared for his back-to-school night. He had an awesome PowerPoint. Um, then we had a parent that, um, wanted to know if we could possibly do a parent orientation for new parents coming into our district. They, um, talked about, um, how the bike racks over at McMadison and how the students are actually using them and they cleaned up the area and made the schools look a lot better. We had a father that was absolutely overjoyed with Fathers That Matter at school two. And he said he was proud and he gives props to Mrs. Purpits for having it. There was over four hundred dads that showed up. So, uh, that was a fabulous program. Um, another parent said that they were kind of concerned and didn't actually know what, um, Mr. Miller was going to be doing. And they are amazingly surprised and loving the spirit that you have, uh, with everything that you're doing in the district. Um, they wanted to know if, uh, maybe we can connect with New Jersey Clean and, um, look into getting some grants. And, um, that's about the, um, comments. So our next meeting is going to be November fourteenth at six thirty at the administration building. And, uh, we'd like to see you all there. We're gonna have some refreshments, so if you have not come to one, please try to come out. We'd love to see new faces. And, uh, we always love to see our, uh, our regular people coming out. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Okay. Uh, now we have EST for students at the high school.
Yes. Okay, so I actually had a meeting with them today. And, um, we actually started with a, um, I was at the library and it was at eleven, I'm sorry, ten forty-five this morning. We had freshman, sophomore, junior and senior representation. We had seven males and eleven females, so we had a good blend of, um, students. Um, they had some concerns. They were worried about the sixth and seventh period bells. They said they kind of ring too fast and they're not able to get to class on time. But we've, um, Mrs. Tori did come in at, at the end of the meeting and she discussed some of the concerns with them. So she was able to answer, um, some of the concerns that they had right then and there instead of having to wait a whole entire month to get back to them with information. So that was awesome. Um, they were concerned about some of the smoking that's going on around the grounds of the school. Uh, they're very happy that the chicken tenders and the french fries are, um, doing really well in the cafeteria. They said they're, they're amazing and astonishing. The french fries are astonishing. Um, they are concerned that they have to pay for the honey mustard for the chicken tender, so we're gonna look into that. And, um, they had some other concerns about bottlenecking in the main lobbies, um, here in the main building and also over at the, um, academy building. Uh, they had some ID concerns also. And, um, they were very, very happy that the cafeteria is now giving them smoothie. They said they're paying a dollar twenty-five for it, but they would rather have the smoothie instead of the fruit cups. And they're hoping that they can get that a couple of times a week instead of just once a, you know, once a week. So, um, they were also concerned about some overcrowding in the ROTC classrooms during , uh, third period and also gym period classes nine and ten. Um, they were concerned about some fundraisers that the clubs wanted to do and sell in sweets that they weren't allowed to sell during the school day. And they won't, didn't understand the concept, um, how it does interrupt instruction and things like that, so that was all explained to them. And they want to know if it's possible that we can get scanners for each of the classrooms so that they can scan in and attendance is already taken as they scan in. They said one of the classrooms has the scanner and they would like to have, see that in all of the classrooms. Um, and that was it for their, this report for the student EST. Our next meeting's gonna be November twentieth at nine thirty in the library. And that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Well, thank you very much. All right, now we'll go on to EST for students. Um, who wants to handle this? Topaleski, Mr. Martucci, or Mr. Walrath?
Uh, Mr. Walrath and I get, uh, will take care of Soul and Mr. Walrath will talk about McMadison.
Okay.
Uh, we met on September twenty-sixth, uh, at Soul in the morning. Uh, one of the topics, uh, they felt that the food, uh, was improved especially over what they had in the elementary school, but they were a little concerned about the prices, the water prices. Um, some expressed that they did not like the loss of the identity moving from the Hawks of gold in the morning to the Linden Tigers of, uh, orange and black. Uh, others thought it was okay. Uh, they felt the cleaner lockers, they had a little concern about some graffiti and the graffiti being removed in a faster manner. They talked about possibly having some more electives. Um, they talked about sports uniforms, uh, and sixth graders on some of the sports teams, additional pep rally and dance for the spring. Uh, not being allowed to use computer to take notes in some of the classes. They felt that the cafeteria chairs were a little uncomfortable and I had to agree with them, sitting on a cafeteria chair. Uh, and they wanted to see some more grade level activities like, uh, fifth and sixth grade classes competing against each other, kind of like a field day type stuff, class against class. And possibly having fundraisers for class trips.
Mr. Walrath?
All right, at McMadison, we met the kids in the afternoon. We had four sixth graders, five seventh graders and four eighth graders and two advisors. Um, students were concerned because, um, like Mr. Topaleski said, at Soul they charge a dollar twenty-five for water bottles and, and McMadison water bottles are a dollar. Um, and Snapple happens to be, uh, cheaper actually.
Pretty soon they're doing more.
Where, oh, that's where the kids hold it. And Snapple was cheaper, so they were a little surprised with that. They also said that the girls' soccer uniforms are nice and clean at McMadison and they were happy about that, whereas Soul differed. Um, the girls' basketball uniforms weren't in, uh, pretty good condition, um, but however, Dr. Robert Tozzi said that all the sports in the middle schools are going to be receiving uniforms if they haven't already. Um, they like how everybody's black and orange and they're all Tigers now. Um, they said that the laptop loners, that we need more loners in the district, uh, because some of them have been waiting for quite some time to get their laptops back and they're not able to complete their homework. And because of that, they're being penalized by their teachers. Um, they said that new students don't have laptops yet, uh, as of our meeting and that they find it to be a problem because they don't even have a username and password, therefore they can't log into the computers in the media center and print anything that they need to print. Um, they said that also kids are getting in trouble sometimes for not having their printed homework, um, and their teachers won't even accept it if it's not printed out and they really want to be able to still get credit for it even though they email to their teacher or Dropbox. Some of the teachers aren't allowing that. Uh, they said that they're really upset, which is very surprising to Mr. Topaleski and I, that they're upset that they get a lot of cursing in the hallways and that they hope that the teachers can actually enforce the no cursing policy instead of just saying, you know, watch your mouth. They want to actually see some action taken by the teachers and make sure that the kids are in trouble for that. Um, they love the TV in the cafeteria so that they could see the different current events that are going on and many, um, events that are taking place in the school. And also they would want to see the music before the bell rings playing, um, like today's hits on the, on the loudspeaker before, uh, the day. And also finally, uh, they were a little concerned with the second floor bathroom, um, by the stairwell, um, that it doesn't flush correctly and they're hoping to get that repaired. And that completes the next of EST.
Thank you, Mr. Walrath. Uh, Mr. Martucci, EST for special ed?
Uh, yes, the director of special services, uh, Dr. Marie Stefannik. In your curriculum and instruction agenda tonight, uh, her meetings are set for December seventh, March fifteenth and on May tenth. They are very informative. Parents will be notified prior to the meeting, well in advance. And the number of meetings that I attended last year, they are very, very informative for the parents that follow to that category with their, uh, with their students because of the, uh, laws and the certain things that are available to them through county and state agencies. But again, all parents will be notified through email and through a personal letter from Dr. Stefannik regarding these three, uh, meetings in December, March and May. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martucci. At this time, do we have any unfinished business to be brought before the board?
Uh, unfinished business.
Good evening.
Unfinished. Comments, yes.
Okay, we're gonna get to that in a minute. Okay. Any board member have any comments? Or new business to be brought about?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, first, if you have a child at the high school, you know that our big read over the summer was the color of water. On Wednesday, October twenty-fifth, there will be a parent university on the book. A RSVP is required. You can email Emily McElwitz, but we will have guest speakers, uh, access to ancestry.com databases, discussion of the novel and late refreshments will be served. We hope that the parents from the high school will join us that evening. It'll be from six thirty to eight thirty here at the high school media center. Also, on September twentieth, I had the pleasure of attending the ESL parent breakfast at school number two. I have to say that Mr. Lamosta and his team did an excellent job. It was a nice turnout. Um, I also want to mention that Mr. Lamosta received a grant to teach ESL to our, uh, parents. It'll be held here at the high school next year. He had over forty parents register for this class. The classes will be geared towards helping these parents assist their children throughout the school day as well. So in other words, if they're learning about, uh, foods, it'll be, uh, include school lunches. If it's about, um, clothing, it'll be, include dress policy. Um, it could be about school supplies, things like that. Anything to help these parents assist their children throughout the school day and to allow the parents to be more involved in our school system. Also, on Monday, October twenty-third, our French exchange students will be arriving. They will be here, um, through November fourth. During their visit here, they'll be, uh, going to the nine eleven memorial, uh, museum in New York City. They'll also be visiting Washington DC. And of course, also be attending classes here with their home state parents. Now, I'm studying French and it's not working very well, but I do have a student stay with me for the next two weeks, uh, so I'm gonna have to practice up a little bit. But that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Yes. Birch?
Thank you. Um, I just would like to say to Mrs. Donnie, thank you for all of your years of dedication and love and commitment to the students over at school number two. You will be greatly missed. And, um, I also would like to, um, talk about, um, Mrs. Lowry for a moment. Uh, she was a special education teacher for my daughter. She had her for the three years that she was in McMadison. And, um, everything that was written about her and spoke about her is absolutely one hundred percent the truth. She was dedicated to those children. She was more than just a teacher to them. She was their mentor. She was their go-to person, especially for my daughter. And, uh, she will be greatly missed. And on another note, um, I was in the library this afternoon and, um, the, I spoke with the librarian who said that they started to have ninth grade orientation, um, in, at our library here in the high school. And she said the amount of books that have been taken out since the ninth graders have learned about the library and everything that's going on there has, um, the one staff member said she started there in January and the amount of books in this month alone that were taken out is more than the entire time since January. So parents, please let your students know, go to the library, they can take out books and yes, they are free. They can take them out for free. Um, and enjoy anything else that's going on in the library. It's a great source of information for them and, uh, take advantage of it. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Birch. Anybody else have any comments?
Mr. Collins?
Yet.
Sorry. Mrs. Donnie, I'm sorry. I didn't need to forget about you. Don't worry. But I, you know how much I appreciate you, that I love you and I've gotten to know you over the past ten years, along with your wonderful husband, your children and your grandchildren. You're gonna be greatly missed, but I hope that you continue to visit us here at our Board of Ed meetings. You can leave your phone now. Thank you.
All right, I too have to reiterate, um, we are gonna miss you, buddy. We go back a long, long time and I hope to still see you. And good luck in your retirement.
Thanks.
Okay, and your husband's still well despite what we said.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Uh, one more thing, um, for the toy drive that we're doing this year that's sponsored by the Board of Education, if there's any families or if you know of any families that are in Linden, uh, we're joining with the Linden, uh, Community Services Organization as well. If you know of any families in need, please reach out to us. You can feel free to email me. It's awalrath@lindenps.org.
Hey, anybody else? Okay, at this time, I will ask from the chairman. Go move.
Second.
Go.
Mr. Topaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Walrath?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviana?[1774.25]